This meeting is now called for. Roll call please, Senator.
Trustee Karen Lewis, both sides. Trustee Jamila Fett, both sides. Trustee Donna Vulture, absent. Trustee Jewel Thompson, present. Trustee Gina Williams, here. Trustee Theo Brooks, here. Mayor Ruben, yes?
I'm present. Okay, is there someone who would like to make a motion to allow trustee Jonathan to participate in the electronic?
So.
Move by trustee Willis.
Second.
Second by. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We received a request from trustee Jewel Thompson for electronic attendance due to illness.
Okay, there's a motion at a second roll call to allow trustee Jewel Thompson to participate in the electronic. Via because of illness. This is permission. Roll call please, Senator.
Trustee Karen Lewis, both sides. Trustee Jamila Fett, both sides. Trustee Gina Williams, both sides. Trustee Theo Brooks, still in train. Here he comes. Trustee Donna Vulture, absent.
This is to allow trustee Thompson to attend the electronic.
Oh, both sides.
Thank you. Theo Brooks is present and both sides for trustee Thompson to attend the electronic. And Mayor Ruben, yes?
Both sides. All right, stand for the mayor of the ladies.
My faithful ladies, civil rights of the United States of America, we bring to you our little state, one nation, under God, infinite and just as far.
Jim Republican Congress, what do you talk to us about? Um, building on it. Wait, what are you saying?
You got the clock on?
Not yet, not yet, not yet.
Um, hello, everybody.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Um, I'm asking the mayor this question, and please give me an answer, or if anybody can give me an answer. Because I keep up with what's going on in my village. I know that with Amazon, it was said that Amazon loaned our village a million dollars to seven percent to be paid back in three years. Last night, Mr. Good stated, I think you were going to Japan with him, he stated that, no, that was not a loan, that Amazon gave the village, gave the village a million dollars. And conversation broke out, and we went back and forth, back and forth, and he said, again, seven times, that Amazon gave the village, not a loan, but gave the village one million dollars. He appeared to not know what we were talking about. I need some answers to that.
Yes, yes, more, but I'll answer directly. Amazon had never given us money, and Mark Good is the one who loaned the village money, benefits out of tip seven, and that's what the record will reflect because the benefits that we used for tip seven, which acquired new police cars and other equipment to service the tip seven area. And there's a payment plan, a place to pay, Venture One, that Amazon had nothing to do with giving or lending or fronting any money to perform the property services to tip seven.
I understand what you're saying, but Mr. Good, can I hear?
I understand, sure, sure.
Um, I hear what you're saying, but Mr. Good said, no, Amazon did not, and he did not give a correction, he did not elaborate any further about that.
I didn't hear him say anything regarding that, Venture One was the one who funded us the million dollars for additional equipment to lease, so the village should have been fed up some people coming from Amazon, and with those, those things we bought were payment squad trucks and new public works trucks with lights and new batteries and stuff like that, and it's on a payment plan to come back out of the increment out of about 25% out of the tip, so it actually never comes back a big payment out of the general fund. So I'm kind of confused on what you're speaking of, because Amazon never paid us any money, Mr. More.
Um, may I ask this question also?
Come on, yeah, sure.
Um, have any of the money, so you say, that was supposed to be given or loaned or whatever, has any of it been paid back?
Yes, if I'm not mistaken, don't poke me on that, I believe that there was an initiation start under Mrs. Key, just to have the money back. But don't poke me, I'll check to see for sure, if that was last time started by that.
Um, I wish that any of the trustees can elaborate a little bit more on what happened last night, what was said last night, what had happened that was, what we have been hearing is that Amazon gave a million dollars to the village. Uh, I think trustee Brooks is about the only person that can, because he was here, the other trustees were not, so if you could, you know, expand upon that, trustee Brooks?
About the seven percent. Here we go, okay, um, yes, Ms. Millie, it's part of that agreement, what was supposed to happen was the developer loaned the village one million dollars, we paid it back at seven percent, and the developer would take it from the bank, we would not take it from the bank, and the purpose of that money was supposed to be for bike trucks, squad cars, and so forth. So, uh, I, I don't know, I think you were with me along that struggle of trying to find the truth on this Ernest thing, which she was never forthcoming with it, so I don't know if we paid it all back, but what I do know is that, yes, at seven percent, we borrowed the money from the developer, that was part of that agreement, uh, for Amazon to be in that building.
Thank you, Mr. More, I say, you were here last night, and you saw her, the conversation among the trustees and also our residents here.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you understand?
I heard what he said, but I know the truth, and that's, that's the truth. He, you know, we, we got a million dollars from him, I, I did hear, if I'm not mistaken, you did listen with trustees, and I believe trustee Vulture even corrected them about that, that he didn't give one million, it was, he borrowed, you know, we borrowed that money, and we had to pay it back, and I think one of the moments where I was angry, what I was angry about was that, uh, that agreement would not allow our finance person at the time to pay it on our own, like she would cut the check and say like she was going to run, no, we wanted his money out the bank account without us relying on us. So that was, that's, that's the truth of it, yes, I heard about the Craig Park, and I think trustee Williams was set to raise her hand and say, is some of the numbers and the gifts inflated, but at the end of the day, uh, I feel that this board will make a sound decision on anything, and if it is something that's false, he right, it's, it's feeling somewhat easy, you know, tell the truth, and that's the truth, you know, it's at seven percent, and he got that money from him.
I wonder why he seemed like he was bad, he looked like, he was bad, he looked bad, and, you know, I think trustee Thompson had said, no, um, you borrowed, you know, you lent it to us, and then I went out and said, yeah, because you said a three-year agreement, he had three years to pay it back, so I didn't know if payments had been made or not, but he did seem like it was like a dare and dare, like, like he knew what we were talking about.
I find it a bit strange.
Yeah, but it's regarding the Amazon building, I don't, I think he might have got, I can't, I can't say.
That was good.
Yeah, because he might have been saying it was a part of the Amazon project, I don't know, I don't remember that, but I know that Amazon never paid us any money. And it was a part of, and it was a part of Amazon agreeing that he wanted us a million dollars, because there was certain amount, it was necessary to provide the service for the interview us a good people, so that's what I know of, and it was set up in an incremental process that you never would have to pay back out of general fund, it was paid back annually out of about 25% increment out of the tip.
Now, what he said, because he said, Amazon gave us, he didn't say he didn't owe us.
I know, but maybe we all got this misunderstood, because that's not, that's not facts about Amazon.
He's talking about Amazon and its son.
The, the contract that is staying that is conventionally held, so that's what we're saying, because it wasn't from Amazon, it was from Venture One.
So he didn't know from him.
Just saying, that's why, that's why I kind of reiterate, the other day, right, that's why I kind of reiterate, like, you know, if it was a loan, seven percent, yeah, it's like we didn't understand that, but it was from Venture One that was the case.
All right, and you know what, if I could go again, finish your question, now, how about you, that's what it is, let me see before you now, okay, we're going to go down to new business, a resolution to prove can authorize the execution of collective bargaining agreements by and between the village of University and Park, schemes to solve severance for lease and start, is there a motion?
So.
Pooed by trustee Brooks?
Second.
Second by Willis?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Can I just make a comment?
Absolutely.
Uh, I just want to make a comment, uh, and this is only because I am a fellow brother law enforcer. The contract was not held up because, I guess, I want to clear a high price alternative we have, Montana lunch, officers cut that out. It was not held up because of that or any other reason, the contract was made, I spoke with myself, spoke with manager Scott, Felicia Fraser came in on the back end of it, I think it was a great contract, I was here with the last time the contract was passed, I just say this, guys, if I'm still here, if you have a problem with your contract not being on time, approachable, don't put the comments out there in the law enforcement community, because I have reputation just like you do, and I mean what I say, and I say what I mean. With that, Mr. Mayor, they know what I'm talking about, I'm usually talking with the coat of blue, but they know what I'm talking about, so with that, my vote reflects our vote about the contract.
Ten four, roll call.
Yeah, I think, I know we were talking about, we had a whole discussion about contract, there were several things that I had concerns about, the attorney that I was able to answer was not available at the time to answer those questions, manager Scott said that you're taking that to work, and a couple of additions that I had, were you able to do that?
I did discuss some of that.
Some, I don't know, results. I'm just saying, anyway, the conversation between the trustees and the village manager, or the attorney, I just never got any of those questions that I had concerns about, and I had additional ones that I never got a chance to address, so as, I just want to say, my input is based off of these, still haven't received any information, and I know that there were a lot of questions that was asked in regards to the contract that hasn't been addressed.
So I did want to add, you did make the comment about not getting the old contract, or you wanted to review the old contract, the contract that's in front of you is the old contract, that's why I stated that it was redlined, redlined means that the existing old contract is there, and the changes, you said you weren't, you weren't aware of the changes, the changes are the things that were redlined. Furthermore, the contract was ratified, it was voted on by the membership, and at this point to go back, that's something that we can't do at this point, to be honest, so I don't know if, if the, she wants to chime in, attorney Fraser?
So let me just say, and I did mention to the attorney concerns that you had in regards to, I think you had mentioned about the uniform that you questioned about them having a voucher, you questioned the amount of money that they were receiving for their uniform allowance, you questioned the amount that they were getting for their insurance, you thought that they should keep paying a larger portion, I can't remember some of your other concerns.
But first, we should be talking about what was discussed, that was discussed as a session, but I'm stating that there was other questions that he had concerns about, that wasn't able to be asked, because attorney Fraser was the one that performed the contract, and the attorney down the series stated that he cannot answer those questions, so it's not based off of me seeing the previous contract, even the new stuff that's on the contract, I had questions for, and we went over this several times, this is the second time that the contract has been brought up, and the questions have happened, so that's what I'm stating, and my vote reflects that I have not received the information, I do not agree with all of the information that is taken in contract, because I never had a chance to voice our opinion.
So let me say, when I came over, there were certain things that had already been negotiated between reunion and the prior council, and so if that's the case, I can't touch it, now, when I say that, I mean, if we're going back, and if I'm saying, no, we were not agreed to that now, that's bad faith, I mean, one of them, okay, so that's just plain and simple, so understand, there was some things that the village, meaning whether it's old administration or us, it's the village, they had already agreed to see things when I came in, so let's just understand that not everything that's been redlined in here was necessarily as we felt, but we ain't coming in and saying, yes, this is what we're agreeing to, so that's where we start, we understood that there were certain things, without getting into detail, I hear what those things were, there were certain things that were already agreed to, now, that being said, we then understood that there were those things, but then there were also things that had already from the village been proposed, they hadn't been agreed to by the union, but we, this is a group, still a team now, at this point, we're a team, I'm not going to say them, you guys, you're a team, so I'm sitting in there, everyone to me, the proposals that we had made before I had even gotten there, and they're like, you know, these were your proposal, um, and although they had not agreed to them, they were going out there, so that was kind of where we started, because I had assumed at some point, or even though it was not necessarily you all, you know, like some of the new trustees, it looks like to bargain, try to bargain, keep the relationship okay, and, and, and understand, I don't know if it's easy to tell out here, it was a modest, but we told them enough, we just did, I mean, we really did, but because, um, I know the, the question came up about insurance, that was never one of those proposals, like that was never on the sheet, the insurance just never came out, so that wasn't a thought that we were willing to touch that, because I would be quite honest with you, especially with, um, the way that law enforcement is now, and the fact that, you know, every town, it's not just here, every town is trying to figure out ways to keep their officers, and then, you know, attract new officers, and, you know, some of these towns are competing, they're getting these bonuses, and, you know, we, I even asked the manager, I'm like, look, we, can we get $15,000 bonuses, can we do, you know, I'm trying, he's like, we can't do that, you know, that's not something we can do, but I'm telling you, we're back in the world trying to figure these ways out to do it, because we're trying to keep officers, we're trying to attract officers, so I'm just saying this to you, because I know we can't get into too much detail, but understand that we, I can only play the hand that I'm dealt, I mean, so there were certain things that I felt we already had, that, you know, already signed off on, or kind of already dealt to us when we got back there, and so we're just trying to figure out, okay, let's see what we can do, because they were very frustrated, and it didn't have anything to do with the people, it's just that law enforcement being the way that it is, and I can't, because all my towns are kind of like that, um, and so, to answer your question, as far as like, I knew insurance was a piece, but that was never brought up to them, and all those ones that they have been negotiating prior, and so I'll be honest, I never, we never thought to even break that up, because in my mind, we're just trying to get this done, we're trying to figure something out, we're saying that we're gonna stay, we knew that years prior, they had even, I think it was the last contract, when I was saying, and Theo, you might even remember this, there was a contract period, I think you were here prior, excuse me, that period, where they didn't even get a raise.
No, no, it was, uh.
Well, it was a very many.
It was three, in, in 2018, he made like a three, three, two, two, it was like, it was still small.
It was, it was small, and it was, it was small, and I do remember, um, when we were, we were trying to figure out like what we could do to, to try to attract, or, you know, we were trying to figure out, okay, do we want to give one to the people that are here, or do we want to try to give one to the starting officer, you know, to incoming officers, like we were just trying to play around, because we knew we couldn't give them what they wanted, and what they were asking for, we knew we couldn't do, but we were just trying to figure out what we could, so I'm just telling all of this to say that it wasn't a situation where we were just back there like, yeah, well, what do you want, we'll give it to you, like we had something, you know, we had, I mean, we had, we had, but we were dealt, and when I looked at what was signed off on, I'm like, okay, well, we stuck with this, and then we had these proposals that, quite frankly, I wouldn't have been necessary to put across the table, but you don't have to say they were bad, it's just not going to have done it, but maybe at that time, it was okay, um, and then as far as the vouchers and stuff, that was never something that was going across the table either, I would say to me, in most of my towns, a lot of them are getting away from the vouchers system, they just aren't, um, the reason that a lot of them are getting away from the vouchers system is because, and I don't know if it's true or not, I'm being told that you can get things a lot cheaper if you're moving away, now, I don't know, you shop, so a lot of these places, a lot of my towns, I'm pushing these contracts now, where we're moving away from vouchers, and the officers aren't projecting, like the towns don't want the vouchers system, the employer doesn't want it, and officers aren't projecting to that high, because they can, they can get more for less, right, for their money, so I never really considered the voucher, because in my experience, what I've experienced over the past few years, is that nobody gets a voucher, because it's been a bit of both of us like that. Right, I, I didn't even, I didn't see this about the system, so I don't know, I think, so that wasn't what I stated, I was just thinking, and I feel that receipts should be provided, and that they should be actually getting exactly what they're asking for, this is a line item for instance uniforms, that's what they should do, and they should be able to give vouchers to show that that's what they're actually purchasing, you know, the voucher system, none of that is just, this is how it's.
Usually that one is played with the vouchers system, so like, say, if you're giving them a check for, say, $800, I mean, you give them their $80 check, now, if they're not coming to, if they're not coming to support it, they're being informed, you're right, but vouchers, that's just in my experience, the chief can, now, the chief wants to do something that's really.
I'm the most, yeah, the most, okay, so I'm hoping, I don't know if that is a question, but. Thank you for your response.
Roll call, Senator.
Something, did you have?
This, it wasn't by your question.
I just, the only thing I want to say, um, I sat on a ton of those stages, it's grueling, you're there sometimes at midnight, going back and forth, they can meet, Blue Cross, who put us up at West Hotel, because there'd be just that, you know, members management, the one over here, the senior, our, by the time you finally reached an agreement, you know, you're ready for that agreement to pass, because now we have found met in the middle, we would always come here for high number, because we knew we weren't going to get that high number, but we could work our way to talking into benefits and bonuses and other things, so I just know, when this time track reached us, I'm pretty much in agreement, I think management and the members have sat down, they found things, my class, and they're ready to move forward, I'm, you know, I'm not worried about the thousand dollars for the uniform, I know uniforms are higher now, shirts, pants, vests, you name it, it's a lot of money, it's, you know, quite everything is on, and they do, they blow it all on that, but they, they still got to meet with whatever chief or sergeant and make sure that they.
Right, because if they don't come to you, then they, 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 so that's not me on plan, they decide, take it and go with you, where they go.
I'm listening. Thank you, so, you know, that's all I'm, I'm playing, been there, done that, and I'm.
Trustee Brooks?
Yeah, Mayor, I was just going to say, um, I don't, I don't know when the next one is coming up, but, look, because I think I was actually like a year or two behind, um, if the salary is the problem, and I, I think I heard that from some of my colleagues, let me just say this, in 2003, I came in, 2004, I came in and contracted up bills for the three-year, $99,000 contract, because Governor Whitebush thought we was going to have the casino, so it was an attraction for veteran officers, but the casino didn't come, uh, to my understanding, the, those, or many officers gone now, but the three, the, the contract that right now that we're concerned, I don't think we're going to hire 10, 12 officers under the same salary right now, so when the negotiation come back up, just for the courts, we'll know that, you know, we still can go back to like, but the hills did, they went back to a five-year, eighty-something thousand, you know, so those things happen, if, if I'm correct, so they, they, they change it, yeah, so I'm a little concerned, but I talked to the village manager, um, about the salaries, and those veteran officers here will benefit, they outwork them hard, you know, I just think that they don't down the line, we, we just got to talking about tip five, we're going to have that when they come in, and, uh, you know, in a couple of years, I know that when it's time to negotiate the contract again, include the fire fighters, as we do, it's not maybe all about the policeman, but the village will be in a better position when it comes to salaries, so I understand we're still tight, but this one, I can remember that.
How did I, what, I mean, your contract, it's up to.
Four years, four years.
Four years, roll call.
Um, I just have to back up, I have to say, uniforms was not the main concern that I had with the contract, there was other things, there were good things that was in the contract, and I was fine as a Jordan, but there's questions that the, as the trustee had, and I would like to have the answers, and I would like to have you participate in discussions. Like you said, certain things were proposed already, some things were proposed, so you need to ask about it. Some, some of the things that I had questions about, never was even asked. So, as a trustee, I would like those things to be asked. And also, my job as a manager is to make sure that not only am I helping and looking out for our persons, owners, and our employees, but it's also to make sure that I'm accounting for the taxpayers' dollars. So, we wanna make sure that any person that within the contract, that not only are officers, everybody else is giving a fair, a fair deal, I wanna make sure that the village and the residents, the taxpayers is gonna be there as well. I just...
So, my suggestion would be that, so the contracts are coming, so, what some towns, when your contracts are coming up, what they do is they literally make their list, most people make their list, and they know, like, the areas of concerns that they had, and they give it to the village manager, or, you know, to the attorney, and say, "Well, these are the issues that they, that we're having," you know, and, and you wanna make sure that, um, you know, we are addressing. The uniforms are too high, you know, we gotta bring in, and typically, you probably give it to the village manager, because you wanna say, "Okay, insurance is, you know, you gotta start, you know, shopping for insurance for, you know, the uniforms. You gotta figure out something that's beautiful for, um, you know, their sick day." So, something like that. So, that's what I suggest, and that should be in all of, all of your contracts.
And that's, that's current project, that's all I have to say.
But that is just unfortunately, because that process, this one had already had started, you just really weren't in a position, unfortunately, to do that. But, and, you know, and, so I just, you know, that's the process of, and I guess, you know...
Village chairman, how long has it been in the negotiation? How long have we been...
When I came in, I believed the contract was out of force for a few months. So, um, so, year, year. So, we started around the end of October.
Last year?
Yes, last year. It takes a long time, sometimes to do these negotiations. We wouldn't be here till then, after our four days, then we were here five hours, um, returning for a year, and then ten, six hours, uh, most of the day.
All right, uh, we have a question, Trustee Thompson, no, no more public...
I have, I have...
No, excuse me this morning. Trustee Thompson, the public section is overweight.
It's from a resident's 12 years. It's not there, it's not here. I'm not gonna argue with you. Everything that is written in this village, you have to have a receipt. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Trustee, Trustee Thompson. This is more, you're disrupting our meeting, thank you. Trustee Thompson?
Okay, I don't, I don't, thank you, Mayor. I don't know if, can everybody hear me?
No. An- answer your phone, I got it right here, but it's not coming through. Try it again.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Talk through the phone.
I don't know if anybody, everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, because I couldn't hear everybody was there. But what I wanna say is, first of all, I love our public safety officers. We can't live without them, we have to have them. But also, I made a commitment to the people of University Park that I will watch over their money. So, if I have 10 million questions that's never been answered before, I think it's okay, because the practice, the pride of my responsibility is in order to. And so, it's not that I think I'm being obstinate or something like that, it's just that I'm gonna try to look out for the public safety officers and also the people of University Park. It's a funny spot to be in, but I'm strong enough to take it. So, for all the questions that some of us had, I think something else can happen, and we can have an equitable outcome for both sides. Thank you. I hear that.
Thank you, our trustee. Roll call, man.
Trustee Karen Woods, both sides. Trustee Danielle Fattin, both sides. Trustee Thompson, both sides. Trustee Joel Thompson, both sides. Trustee Dana Williams, both sides. Trustee Theo Brooks, both sides. Mayor Reddick.
Both sides.
I understand.
They get a thousand dollars.
Thank you, man. This is more, I'm trying to be better than...
They give you a thousand dollars, easy every year.
We cannot allow you to continue to disrupt my meeting, man, okay? Please contain yourself.
Just ask the question.
The, the public section is over, next hour, I'm just gonna ask, ask you to get out of there, all right? So, please be patient.
Can I add also, that's, that would be clerk resolution, R 2023 dash 27.
Okay, one more sentence.
R 2023 dash 27.
Thank you. Uh, item E1B, a motion authorizing the purchase of a new soft shed. Is there motion?
So, some...
Moved by Brooks?
Second.
Second by McFattin? Roll call.
Trustee Karen Woods, both sides. Trustee Danielle Fattin, both sides. Trustee Dana Brooks, both sides. Trustee Joel Thompson? Both sides.
Two, two.
Both sides. Trustee Dana Williams, both sides. Trustee Theo Brooks, both sides. Mayor Reddick.
Both sides.
I understand it.
That's ordinance 02023 dash 19.
02023 dash 19.
O O, 2023 dash 19.
Thank you very much. Item E1C, a resolution approving MFT Cisco lighting project. Is there motion?
Motion. Second.
Moved by, uh, McFattin, second by Lewis. Roll call, man.
I have to...
Question, please.
What is that? Is that, okay, is it Cisro lighting?
I can tell you that, the Cisro Avenue lighting project. This project is completely funded through Surface Transportation Program, S T P, and it's been conducted currently by Baxter and Woodman. Um, this is gonna improve the design, which is in progress, and the installation of the lighting and landscaping of the corridor to improve safety and basically the visibility along that corridor.
Yeah, so, you can, you can push your part.
Yeah.
And, and, and Brooks, do you remember this light project?
Along the, in part of the porch.
Because they were being bad.
This will be going on.
Roll call, man.
Trustee Karen Woods, both sides. Trustee Danielle Fattin, both sides. Trustee Dana Brooks, both sides. Trustee Joel Thompson? Seven.
Seven.
Trustee Dana Williams, both sides. Trustee Theo Brooks, both sides. And Mayor Reddick.
Both sides.
That's right.
That's resolution 2023 dash 27.
Resolution, how it...
Item E1D, a resolution accepting the recognition of Ontario group and awarding the vehicle to University Park Golf Course, technical placement project, district construction. Is there motion?
So...
Moved by Lewis?
Second.
Second by McFattin? Roll call. What? Questions?
What is this?
What's, it's the debt that...
Right, we went through a deal process, and this really is one of the...
Just got pulled in.
The deck is infested with termites. Yeah, what is it, is it being transformed? Look to...
No, they have completely tear down the entire deck, and they have to redo it.
What, what I'm saying, is it, is it wood?
I believe it's wood.
It is wood.
It's, um...
Is it wood or what?
It is wood.
But they're like, I believe it's wood. I can't see my...
This is what I think I asked.
I don't know which one is the wood.
She has... Which one is the wood?
Yeah, since they think this was our business, they have to look for it. They have to complete a contract, we have to honor it.
They have to go through a grant, to deposit, or sustain, we, we can't have the script.
Uh, they would have to say, uh, they have to...
What would they say?
Also, I don't know, depending, depending issue. My manager, he's been dealing with a lot of some depending issues with the...
Responsible that has been to our, he, he has to ask it.
Why are they replacing it? They've got...
It's infested.
It's completely, it's, like, if you just press on it, it will just almost disintegrate. It's been infested with termites from years of not up... Yeah, no up needs. So, there were three.
There's our nine, that's not working here.
There are three?
I can't see one.
No, wait. B W F?
Yeah, I can't see one.
B W L, Misfit, and Wolf Spirits. Uh, B W F was $181,100. Misfits was $113,250. And Wolf Spirits Dex was $170,878 and 16 cents.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna validate that, um, I have been up at the golf course just to take a list since CHW group is gone. I think, uh, it is, uh, uh, how could I, what, what, what would word, urgent? We need, there's a lot of things we need to do over there. I mean, right away, and the deck is one. I mean, also, uh, I wanna state that border on the meeting. However, I would say is that, uh, the golf course has been producing money. Since CHW group is gone, I think that, uh, we just need, some TLC is needed over there. Uh, not only the, the deck, it's also, I think, one of the depressors is down. Uh, not only that, I got, I even met someone, a friend of Karen, I don't even know if we... I met a friend of yours. Yes, at the golf course. So, our golf course is, it is, it's up and moving. Uh, but I, I just, yes, it's okay, and I would like to emphasize point order, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Moore, please, square trustee.
Yeah, I just wanna emphasize that people are coming, I think that it's, it's, uh, I know we got about seven weeks left. This was just me, as, as a trustee, and if the manager's saying we have the money to spend there, I think we need to spend the money, uh, to get the facility up to par, especially if it can function through the winter, because I am seeing revenue. I mean, that's, I'll just leave it at that, a little bit of revenue, cigarettes. Yes. Yes, we have weddings, we have some weddings. Uh, it's a, yes, okay, it's a lot coming to us these next couple of weeks. The vice of each is coming, so I just kinda want the rest of the board was oblivious to it. Yes, yeah, that's my point.
Yep. All right, roll call, man. Oh, okay, Trustee Thompson?
Yep, just go. Go, go, go.
Okay, okay, um, we have enough. We have enough liabilities in University Park. We don't need any more liabilities. Whatever belongs to us, we need to, uh, raise it and make it safe.
Point, we'll take it, trustee. Roll call, man.
Trustee Karen Woods, both sides. Trustee Danielle Fattin, both sides. Trustee Dana Brooks, both sides. Trustee Joel Thompson? Both sides. Trustee Dana Williams, both sides. Trustee Theo Brooks, both sides. And Mayor Reddick.
Both sides.
And that is resolution 2023 dash 28.
28. President, you know it?
You know. Item E1E, a motion to accept the recognition of Ontario group that received award in the contract, and all implies for the residential demolition project with our authority, 100%. Is there a motion?
So...
Moved by Brooks? Second by Lewis? Roll call, man.
Trustee Karen Woods, both sides. Trustee Danielle Fattin, both sides. Trustee Dana Brooks, both sides. Trustee Joel Thompson? Both sides. Trustee Dana Williams, both sides. Trustee Theo Brooks, both sides. And Mayor Reddick.
Both sides. And, and just for the record, that's the White House on West University Parkway on your south side of the street, that is, that's gonna be a great opportunity for the village to, uh, economically develop. Thank you, all.
And that's, that's ordinance number 2023 dash 20.
Word, you know it?
Mo- item E1, I'll tell you, motion to accept the recognition of Ontario group that the village received award in contract to GBS property makers for the veterans memorial garden, compensates, uh, 45% of that. Is there a motion?
So...
Second, moved by Lewis? Second by Brooks?
Question.
Question, touch us, Jayden.
Question, can we, um, can we table this? Because we have a little veterans that may be coming in, and maybe they can help make some of this decision, or, or something decision about what's gonna happen with the veterans of ours.
We can still accept the bid, and we can still accept the bid. We can, it's up, it's up to the players with the board.
Can, can I, can I just make a comment?
Yes.
I'm concerned that this, because the scope of work is gonna change, the bid is obviously gonna be different. It's gonna be a completely separate bid package and results.
So, what was...
But can I say this also? So, this was prior to me getting here, I have nothing to do with this. Mrs. Z got a grant for the open lands, a comp at open lands, it was $10,000. If it's anything beyond that, the village can pay the remaining amount. So, if the board so chooses to move forward with this, we can do that. And if there are some reasonable changes or things that would like to be made, we can definitely accommodate that if the board so chooses.
Question, the mayor, turn. Um, say, can we pass this? And say, if this, uh, and I hear trustee Thompson, uh, I believe she wants the veterans, uh, committing to have an input to be passed, and then just allow the veterans to bring the half the conversation.
Something good? Yeah, you can, I see now, okay?
Because, the one reason why I say this is that I think we just experienced with the soft shed. The gentleman, the, the gentleman who originally gave the bid when, uh, Director Matt did, when it came for a second type of grant, if I'm not mistaken, he had it up. So, I, I just don't want that to shake, to have no movement.
Exactly.
So, trusty, trustee Thompson, we, could, does that sound like a plan?
Trustee Thompson?
Then we, then we pass it?
How do you know it's a...
That we, we pass it and allow the veterans committing to have their input on it, uh, because it is a bid, and the, the last time we just did, the table, that last bid for the soft shed, it, they went up for last, and the director I gave, and it was the same company, but it turned out to be cheaper, so that we wouldn't run into that, that road again. Would you be okay with that?
I'm concerned with this.
Okay. I'm just, just trying to show some of the leadership.
Listen, that's a, that's a lot better than no.
Yeah. So, yeah, the, 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 just sort of the veterans to see.
Because the scope of work is already designed, and that's gonna be there for the veterans, for all they get, and they have to, yeah.
Uh, I'm trying to exactly what's going on, I'm thinking that area, so we can address it.
So, some of the things that are gonna be done is currently there, it's bricked. So, the bricks are, they were, they've become a loose man. I guess whatever material they used to hold it together, it's no longer. So, it's actually very shaky and unstable, and when we were walking on it, that was just a handful. So, that needs to be redone. There's also gonna be some landscaping with some perennials, um, and basically just cleaning up the resurfacing of the actual monument itself. And we're gonna try to put up some new fresh flags if needed. And we're going to try to put up some new fresh flags if needed.
Any questions?
Alright, any other questions?
Questions.
So I know another side of this was, because it's better memorial. So. I don't know, I think that needs to be put into the conversation.
Point taken. Roll call back.
Trustee Karen Lewis, both sides. Trustee Jamelle Fattin, both sides. Trustee Donna Foulche, both sides. Trustee Joel Thompson. Both sides.
Thank you, trustee.
Trustee Jane Williams, both sides. Trustee Theo Brooks, both sides. And Mayor Rubens.
Both sides to my fellow villagers.
Can you tell? That's ordinance 2023-21.
2023-21. Ordinance noted.
Thank you. Item E1E, a motion to accept the recommendation of Antero Group that the village received awarding the contract to sidewalk repairs at Thompson's Davis Concrete Construction. Is there motion?
Motion.
Moved by McFadden, second by Lewis. Roll call back.
Trustee Karen Lewis, both sides. Trustee Jamelle Fattin, both sides. Trustee Donna Foulche, both sides. Trustee Joel Thompson.
Trustee T.
One more time.
Both sides. Trustee Jane Williams, both sides. Trustee Theo Brooks, both sides. Mayor Rubens.
Both sides. You good if this is the chairman? And you can't go wrong on God, absolutely. Item E1E.
I'm sorry, that's ordinance number 2023-22.
2023-22. Ordinance noted.
Thank you. Item E1E, motion to accept the recommendation of Antero Group that the village received awarding the contract to University Parkway Resurfacing Baytown Engineering, STP funded 100% to the Antero Group. Is there motion?
So.
Moved by Brooks and Lewis, is there second? Second by Lewis. Roll call back.
Questions about questions?
Oh, questions?
Yeah, could you explain this?
Yeah, sorry, this is my thing isn't working. Neither I can ask. So these are missing squares for here around the town center that would be coming from that Corox money. We need to finish, there's a lot of broken. It's actually, looks almost like gravel in certain areas, so there's.
University Parkway Resurfacing Baytown Engineering.
STP.
Okay, University Park Sidecap. So this is also funded through STP. It's this actual sidecap that was never completed that's across the street. So this would deal with that. It's going to go, it's just going to continue and basically it's going to connect the two existing sections of the walk-in cap who basically the connectivity is if you walk on it, it actually ends about a block up. And I got a lot of complaints with your C, the complaints about that. And people with walkers have issues walking, so that's to fund that. It's STP funded 100%.
Yeah, trustee.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that this actually, that was, that was several things that was supposed to be done, and this is one of them. And I'm glad we finally got to it. I think this was when I was in year number.
Two.
Two. And this is year six, so that goes to show, these things take forever, but that's how it goes. Can't say it in other words.
It's nice, sure, but it works.
It works, so it's four years later, we able to finish. And I know one resident, actually, I'm a text or writers in the past, is she continues to ask whether we're going to, you know, that finish connection. But that's, that's all the project that we had put in, like, I want to say several years ago. If I'm not mistaken, we're still trustee. So it's, it takes a lot, a long time for these things to get done. A year, one time.
Thank you, trustee. Roll call back.
Trustee Karen Lewis, both sides. Trustee Jamelle Fattin, both sides. Trustee Donna Foulche, both sides. Trustee Joel Thompson. Both sides. Trustee Jane Williams, both sides. Trustee Theo Brooks, both sides. Mayor Rubens.
Both sides.
Eyes happy.
That's ordinance number 2023-23.
Okay, item E1E, one I, a motion to accept the recommendation of Antero Group that the village received awarding the contract for University Parkway Sidecap Baytown Engineering to Antero Group. Again, STP funded 100%. Is there motion?
So.
Moved by trustee, second by McFadden. Roll call back.
All right, question?
I'm asking, I'm just ready to question because just for the village owner to explain when they are to residents, let's talk actually. For absolutely.
So this is going to be from Cicero Avenue and the Metro Station entrance. So that resurfacing is going to take place, it's probably not just deteriorating. That's what I'm saying.
Where's Joel Thompson?
Well, trustee Thompson, no, she, roll call.
Trustee Lewis, both sides. Trustee Jamelle Fattin, both sides. Trustee Donna Foulche, both sides. Trustee Joel Thompson. Both sides. Trustee Jane Williams, both sides. Trustee Theo Brooks, both sides. Mayor Rubens.
Both sides.
Eyes happy.
This is going to be ordinance 2023-24.
Order noted.
Item E1E, resolution including MFT purchase of rock salt for fiscal year 2023, 2023. MFT overview tax laws. Is there motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make one amendment. It says 2023 to 2023, but it really should say 2023 to 2024 because technically the rock salt will be used through, more likely, February, maybe March. So I would like to amend that to 2023-2024.
Okay, there's a motion. We need a motion for the board members to make an amendment. Move motion by trustee McFadden, that's your motion? To amend that to 2024? All right, now second? Second by trustee Lewis. Roll call back for the amendment.
Trustee Karen Lewis, both sides. Trustee Jamelle Fattin, both sides. Trustee Donna Foulche, both sides. Trustee Joel Thompson. Both sides. Trustee Jane Williams, both sides. Trustee Theo Brooks, both sides. And Mayor Rubens.
Both sides.
Eyes happy for the amendment to dedicate this year 2024.
Okay, now I have a motion on the amendment. Is there motion?
Motion.
Is there second?
Second.
Roll call back.
Now, I have actually a question.
Okay, roll call.
So what's happening with the salt that's there?
So the salt is there now. And we're looking to put the salt shed up because of the back of the vents along the back. Public works is broken. We are losing salt minimal, not a lot, but it's still running. Every time it rains and things like that, it kind of dissipates. So hopefully, we'll be able to cover it properly. And this is going to be additional salt because additional salt will maybe be needed, but you never want to run out of salt in the winter. That's one of the biggest mistakes you can make. And if you purchase the salt later on, sometimes it's absorbed it and you have to purchase it in the wintertime. So I'd like to get this, you know, I want to get ahead of this, just in case. And I wanted to add too, the amount is $147,500 and that is MFT eligible.
It was motion by McFadden, and that's the second.
It was. So it sounded still some good?
Roll call back.
Trustee Karen Lewis, both sides. Trustee Jamelle Fattin, both sides. Trustee Donna Foulche, both sides. Trustee Joel Thompson. Both sides. Trustee Jane Williams, both sides. Trustee Theo Brooks, both sides. Mayor Rubens.
Both sides.
Eyes happy.
That is resolution 2023-29.
Thank you.
Resolution noted.
Oh, hey, come here, Sharon. Item E1E, approval of release settlement agreement and Michael Realty Associates versus Village Department. 16 Chapter 2048. Is there motion? Is there a motion? Alright, looks like this.
Can you explain? Yeah. I don't know this is something. Yeah, so I believe this was, if I'm not mistaken, I know. I remember the, I wasn't here the last meeting. It was, not the last meeting. The meeting, no, because it can't be explained in some, in open session, but it was something that was an executive session. I know one of the partners discussed it and, so this is why it's before you because my understanding was that they did come, Mike Grab and the board did come to discuss it. It's back up in court on the 21st. And unfortunately, because it is pending litigation matter, it can't be discussed. But my understanding was that this was discussed in executive session. Because this is what we discussed. Pending litigation matters cannot be discussed in an open session. So that's what it is because they're in bad fashion.
Alright, there's time, there we go. Approval of release and settlement agreement and Michael Realty Associates versus Village Department. Is there motion?
So.
Moved by Lewis, second by Brooks. Roll call back.
Trustee Karen Lewis, both sides. Trustee Jamelle Fattin, both sides. Trustee Donna Foulche, both sides. Trustee Joel Thompson. Both sides. Trustee Jane Williams, both sides. Trustee Theo Brooks, both sides. Mayor Rubens.
Both sides.
Who are you voting on?
Uh, yeah, I have a question.
Motion to adjourn, personal.
Is there second? All right, later.